Okay, green lights on. So just so everybody knows, we opened the session at 9:30. We went into executive session, closed executive session, came back into open session. So now we'll start the open work session and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Hope we can stand first. Jim?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today we have asked the IDA to come and present to the board. We're trying to do it with different boards. We've asked the IDA to come first. I think it's February 15th. We're going to do a tri-board meeting, which will be zoning board and planning board as well as our board here. And we're just trying to improve communication between the different boards and the activities that are going on in town. So we all are on the same page when we have discussions. So I will, would you guys like to come up and present? Maybe introduce yourself this way on channel 22. We know who everybody is.
Tom Cruise.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Laura.
Hi, Tom. How are you?
Good to see you again.
Tom, good to see you again.
Hi, Laurie.
You too.
I already congratulated Joey.
Thank you.
Hello.
Morning, Bob.
You're like a fixture here.
Yes.
Wait, wait a minute. Tell me what you want to say.
Right here? Do I sit here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Tracy. How are you?
Hi, Tracy.
How are you?
Very good. Hi, thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, Tracy.
Where's counsel?
Morning again.
Sir, really, congratulations to both of you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
May it be a very fruitful year.
Thank you.
Or two, actually.
We hope so. Thank you. I'm not. So I know that you guys brought a presentation.
We did.
So I will let you, oh, take it away.
All right, before you do, let me make an introduction. I'm Tom Cruise. I'm the chair of the Board of the IDA. And thank you for inviting us. We're happy to be here.
Thank you.
And we look forward to the interaction. Thanks very much for that invite. I congratulated you all, wished you a happy new year. And except for Jim Wood and Tim Hubbard, who are not in need of election, but I want to thank you guys also for working with me on the IDA and also working behind my own development. Appreciate it very well. So here's our plan today. I just want to spend a few moments introducing our board. Some of you know them, some of you may not. It won't take long, but they're a very accomplished group. So overall, the board has a lot of talents, a lot of presence. They're all residents. They're all well-educated. They all have, there's different disciplines and there's different talents. They're very experienced, they're successful business people, they're active volunteers in our town, representing a wide variety of organizations. I find them very passionate, very proactive in what they do, and that is making positive contributions to the success of the town of Riverhead in building our tax base in the long term. We have five board members when we're in full house. And the first one, Tony Berisi, is our newest. He's got about six months. He's got the flu and we thank him for not coming.
Indeed.
He is a recent resident. He's 30 years plus as a school principal in the town of Huntington and served as president and the, or president of the district, principal's associate of the town of Huntington. Then there's Bob Kearns, who I think most of you know. Where is he? Oh, there he is. He's a, an owner of a marketing and planning consultancy. He's been an entrepreneur, I think, since birth and he's still doing things. And I think he's got a new one going, but I won't break the news. He is a past consultant for the marketing and general manager of Martha Clara Vineyards. He did that for some years, is that right? And what's your position now with the Chamber of Commerce? You're past president, is that correct?
No, I just can't relate.
She'll use her marketing positions, please.
Thank you very much. And there's also Marianne Popczynski, who I think, you know, longtime resident like Bob. She's the Director of External Affairs, Strategic Partnerships, Suffolk County Community College. A very broad experience in economic and workplace development, workforce development would be more accurate. Past Chair of the Empire Zone Administration Board of Suffolk, and it's a pleasure to have Luke Halligeris is our longest-term member, going on 12 years. He's a longtime professional engineer as well. But unfortunately, as I think you know, he's turned in his resignation because he and his wife Barbara are moving to Florida. We'll hate to see him go, but we're beginning to think seriously about a replacement. And from the past, we'd certainly like to join the town board in coming up with candidates that you folks can decide if you're comfortable with and are suitable for a position on this The next guy would be me. I have 31 years working for the Allstate Insurance Company. I started as a manager, finished up in Long Island in, let's see, 1995. And I came to Long Island from Chicago, although I'm a New York native, to operate the regional business of Long Island, probably through the Allstate Insurance Company, was the regional vice president and a corporate executive. Then I decided to have it up, but I wasn't ready to retire, so I opened my own business and came with it 10 years ago to Riverhead, because Pat, my wife and I moved here and we wished we'd done it many years before, because we enjoy it so much. But in any case, I now just retired from that business 19 years later and enjoy what I do. Then we have, we have two staff members, I guess you'd call, they're not employees, they're independent consultants. One is our counsel, he's here, Dick Ayers, pretty valuable to us and probably to a lot of other entities in the town. And our accounting CPA, Denise Cooper, some of you may know her, she's not here today. And the one salary person that we have, our executive director, Tracy Stark James, she's literally a one-woman band, the only employee we have. And for those of you who have some idea, Jim would know from sitting here as a liaison from the town board to our meetings, that it's a very complicated organization. It's sort of a quasi-state agency, whatever you want to call it, that continues to pile on regulations year after year after year. Nothing's stopped, as you probably know from your own experience, but other things get there, so it gets to be a bigger deal. Between the procedures, many entities that she has to answer to, and she's still sunsetting the Suffolk County Empire Zone, which used to run until it stopped, but there were still businesses out there that weren't finished and they needed somebody to manage them. The Riverhead Town Board and the IDA agreed that we would do that, I say "we," gee, do that. So now, what are we going to do today? We're going to get to Tracy and she's going to tell you what it is we do, how we do it, what kind of progress and successes we've made, and any questions are certainly welcome. So Tracy, it's all yours.
Hey Larry? Can you maybe dim a couple of lights to?
They just got off the south row.
So I think I can be loud enough. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to thank the town board for inviting the IDA in for the presentation. I'm actually hoping to dispel some IDA misconceptions and confusion about what the agency actually does and how important and beneficial it has been to our community. The snapshot we're going to look at today is based on the 2016-17 tax year. Our 17-18 reports won't come in until March, so this is the latest data. Our mission is simple. The agency has existed since 1980 and is here to attract new business and help existing businesses expand and stay in town. We work to advance the job opportunities and general prosperity for the welfare of the residents of Riverhead. And as we go through this PowerPoint today, one very important thing to keep in mind is that economic development is a long-term investment. There's no instant gratification, and the agency looks at long-term progress, long-term impact, and long-term end results. So just to put some things in perspective, everyone probably knows there's almost 17,000 tax parcels in the town of Riverhead. Of those 17,000, there's more than 15,000 with some form of an exemption on it, whether it be star, veterans, EMS, et cetera. Meanwhile, and out of those 1,300, out of those 15,000 parcels or more, there's 1,300 wholly exempt, actually more than 1,300 wholly exempt parcels in the town of Riverhead according to the 16-17 assessment rule. Yet out of those 1,300, only 19 are IDA projects. And although they are reflected on the tax rolls as wholly exempt, I hope to show you today that they are phasing in new additional tax revenue to the town unlike these other We have 27 active projects in that reporting year, but only 19 are currently in the pilot program. And I'm focusing on the 19 pilot projects because they impact the real property taxes. They phase in new tax revenue. So this is just a pie chart to show you the 17,000 parcels in the green. The blue are the wholly exempt. And that little white line on the very top is the IDA projects, which represents .01%. Of those 19 projects in the pilot program, they were previously generating a little over 600 million, 600,000 in tax revenue. Now they are producing over 1.5 to the town annually, and that figure continually increases. So just in a single year, there was an increase of nearly a million dollars in tax revenue from these projects. And out of that, the school district received $750,000. Now you're probably saying to yourself, what about the exemptions? The 100%, 10 years, no taxes, tax-free? All buzzwords that circulate when an IDA is considering a project. Well, I'm hoping to provide some explanations, and one of them has to do with actually the misunderstandings of the terminology of the agency. A big buzzword is the pilot, and another one is an abatement. Those are the two terms I want to explain. A pilot in lieu of taxes is just a contract or an agreement between the property owner and the agency. It's just a contract on how the terms a company will pay your tax revenue. An abatement can be provided within a pilot, and for this agency's purpose, I cannot speak to other agencies, we typically refer to an abatement as a deferment of the tax payment. Pilot agreements are negotiated during the IDA reviewing process, and they may include a phase-in or deferment of additional tax revenue, which is considered an abatement, as I said, or the pilot can be negotiated to pay the same amount of tax revenue currently on the tax bill, or could be a combination of both. So I hope that clarifies a little bit that not all pilots have to contain abatements, and when you hear pilot for 30-year terms, it doesn't necessarily mean there's an abatement for 30 years. Pilot is an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes, which in of itself can provide a negative connotation, but the agency's standard policy for an abatement is the payment of current taxes and a phase-in of additional tax revenue that results from encouraged improvements made to the property and ultimately the increase in assessed value. Now there have been times when the agency has been more aggressive in its abatement schedule in an effort to expedite investment or be more competitive. For instance, our downtown over the past six years, some of you may have noticed, the resurgence and investment which came as a result of a push to revitalize the area. But there's never been a rollback to zero through a pilot, through this pilot agency's history. Never been a rollback to zero in taxes. Another reason why there may be a misunderstanding about RITA projects and being in the pilot program is actually the tax bill itself. When the IDA induces a project, it takes ownership of the property. Because IDA is a tax-exempt public benefit corporation, when a project goes into the agency's name, the tax bill will reflect zeros for those taxing jurisdictions the agency can exempt. And you'll see that over on the right-hand column, all the zeros. Those include the town, county, school, and fire districts. You will see the agency does not exempt the special district taxes. Where's my little arrow? I lost it. There we go. Down here on the right-hand side, those are the special district taxes for this particular project. And so if someone foils a tax bill or they provide a tax, say, what's this company pay? They're going to see all these zeros and say, oh, look, they're only paying $14,000. But wait, there's more. Here's how the agency works. When you see zeros in the amount of the tax column, you need to realize that the property is paying those taxing jurisdictions through that pilot agreement with the IDA. So the tax bill on the property comes to the agency because it is now in our name. We create a worksheet showing the calculation of the amount agreed upon in the pilot agreement and send that to the project with instructions to pay the tax bill directly to the town of Riverhead and the pilot directly to the agency. From there, the agency distributes the additional payments directly to the taxing jurisdictions within 30 days, and they're apportioned according to the tax rates. This particular example reflects the $14,000 in special district taxes paid directly to the town and another $227,000 to the IDA. This one was a phase-in, so it had two worksheets, for a total overall tax obligation to the community of $242,000. In this case, the project was paying $69,000 prior to the IDA. Something else you might not know is that pilot payments actually reduce the tax levy. Each pilot dollar offsets a dollar to be raised in the tax levy. So now you can see, I hope, that the agency collects pilot payments to offset the county, school, and fire district taxes, which is again distributed to those taxing jurisdictions directly from the agency, thereby reducing the actual tax levy. The agency agreements also provide for some safeguards. Pilot agreements and all closing documents that come after an authorization provide some surety to the community and the agency. If a company does not follow through with its obligations in compliance reporting or job creation, capital investment, whatever obligations were committed to, the agency has the authority to recapture those benefits provided. I am happy to report, this agency has had much successful results, many successful results, and never had to claw back any benefits. Whoops. You can only claw back four years, all right? The calculation is within our agreements, and I'm not, I don't believe it's only four years, no. Of those 19 projects currently in the pilot program, the capital, just these 19, the capital investment, the initial capital investment was over $200,000 into the, sorry, $200 million. Yeah, $200 million. They reported the use of over $3 million in sales tax exemption, which I think is a pretty good return on investment. The jobs for these 19 projects started at 337, and the reporting year reflected 943. That's an increase of 65%, or 600 jobs. The assessments for those 19 projects began at $6.4 million, and they are now assessed at $17 million. That translates into a full market value of $130 million into the town of Riverhead. Now we'll have some fun and dispel some myths about the agency. Tanger never received a real property tax abatement. We have not induced big-box retail on Route 58. And there are a number of opinions floating out there about the oversight of the agency, but the truth is, IDAs are governed by the Public Authorities Act and enforced through the New York State Authority Budget Office and the Office of the State Comptroller. We're governed by the provisions of general municipal law, and all this oversight requires agencies to report on all its projects every year. So from January to April, you will find me chained to my desk, buried under paperwork and attached to the computer, while I review compliance reports, sales tax reports, while undergoing our own audit. This is also the reporting period for the Empire Zone, which the agency has contracted by the town of Riverhead to administer. And of course, we have our own board, which is pretty diligent in overseeing the office. The IDA is one of the only tools this town has to encourage economic development and investment and to be competitive. The agency has been crafting public-private partnerships for a long time. P3s, which is the new buzzword for public-private partnerships, and having our own IDA gives us a mechanism to create what we want in this town. These methods have allowed us to encourage investment in Riverhead during the worst economic times. When there was an economic downturn a number of years ago across the nation, Riverhead was still able to attract investment, build, and revitalize its downtown. That was a result of being able to offer a public-private partnership through the IDA. And it's done by providing financial assistance through these four methods. The agency is authorized to issue tax-exempt revenue bonds. They typically offer lower investment, interest rates than traditional financing, but with the rates today, it's a little bit more, it's not as competitive. We can assist by offering mortgage recording tax exemption of .75%. We offer a sales tax exemption on equipment and building material to get the building up and built. And of course, the real property tax abatement through a pilot, which facilitates the phasing in of new taxes. These tools help, let us help developers manage the risk of investment and make it more attractive to make the investment. They close a financing gap to seal a deal. However, not every project is authorized with every benefit. So why are we here? Since 1980, the agency has been given the ability to promote, develop, encourage, assist in the acquiring or constructing, reconstructing, improving, maintaining, equipping, and furnishing facilities. We're here to encourage economic development through investment in order to expand our future tax base. We're here to help prevent unemployment and economic deterioration, to create jobs and improve the overall economic welfare for the residents of the town of Riverhead, and also to improve our recreational opportunities and overall standard of living. We also act as a conduit through which transactions take place and sometimes as an aggressive pathfinder through this governmental and financial maze. In addition, we assist business owners and developers in locating suitable sites for The agency does this through increasing tax revenue and job opportunities by securing these projects, hosting local job fairs, and coordinated efforts with local colleges. We market the town as a community worthy of investment, and I will tell you, Riverhead is seen as a risky investment to many people. My personal favorite service is encouraging the use, the reuse of vacant and dilapidated properties. And you'll note that the agency's most recent focus, of course, has been downtown Riverhead. The agency is also under contract with the town to administer the Empire Zone program, which still monitors 40 companies throughout Suffolk County that report at the same time as the IDA, over 4,300 jobs in the 2015 year, and a capital investment for that reporting year of over $20 million. The state's about two years behind in its reporting, so that 15 is the latest data. And the town also appointed the IDA board to serve and oversee the Riverhead Economic Job Development Corporation. That was initially created to serve the financing needs of Pecanic Bay Medical Center, but it can be used for any nonprofit in the town of Riverhead. So here's what we look for. We look to retain and create private sector jobs. We look at the capital investment being made and the wages being offered. We assess the economic synergies a project will create in the region as a whole, not just Riverhead and Suffolk County. It looks at, we look at increasing revenue to the region, including sales tax and hotel tax. We encourage the elimination of blight and making improvements in distressed areas. We also look for goods and services not readily available to the residents of Riverhead. We honor alignment with local planning and development efforts. I think it's very important to note here that many times the agency meets with a company long before it goes before the town. But the agency will not act on a proposal until we have an indication that the proposal is wanted by the town. And when I say that, I mean authorized through a plan or permitting process or is desired by the town board. We do not create zoning. We are economic developers. The agency will also look at a flight risk of a company and competition with other areas. As you may know or not know, the state of New York has just moved up to number 29 in the Forbes Rating of States to do business in, which is better, of course, than the 49 it was a few years ago, but it's still very difficult to compete. And of course, the agency looks at the project's long-term viability. Economic development, I can't stress enough, is a long-term process. This is not instant, and it's a very broad picture that encompasses much more than just the building of the project itself. We wait a long time to see the actual end results of the decision-making and the impact the development has made. The types of projects we induce range from industrial, manufacturing, educational, cultural, R&amp;D, warehousing, tourism, railroad we could do, horse tracks we could do. Anybody want a horse track? And just some project examples that you may not be aware of. Many of you probably don't know this, but the Riverhead IDA was the first agency in the state, the industrial development agency, bleh, industrial development agency in the state of New York to craft bond financing for a public library, and it afforded the opportunity for the Riverhead Free Library to complete its expansion. And of course, I've mentioned the Pecanic Bay Medical Center. You also may not know this, over the years, the agency has cultivated- We wait a long time to see the actual end results of the decision-making and the impact the development has made. The types of projects we induce range from industrial, manufacturing, educational, cultural, R&amp;D, warehousing, tourism, railroad we could do, horse tracks we could do. Anybody want a horse track? And just some project examples that you may not be aware of. Many of you probably don't know this, but the Riverhead IDA was the first agency in the state, the industrial development agency, bleh, industrial development agency in the state of New York to craft bond financing for a public library. And it afforded the opportunity for the Riverhead Free Library to complete its expansion. And of course, I've mentioned the Pecanic Bay Medical Center. You also may not know this, over the years, the agency's cultivated grants, specifically Calverton Business Incubator is owned and operated by the Stony Brook University. Rida made that application for and received the grant monies of nearly 3.5 million to fund the construction, managed the construction, and reported to the funding agencies and led the bid process. And in 2012, the incubator actually expanded with the Agricultural Consumer Science Center. This is a tremendous asset to have in our town. In '02, the town and the IDA participated in the New York State Bond Act program with regard to small grants for service stations to upgrade emissions control and testing equipment. And the IDA administered that program, served 18,000 businesses with $5,000 to upgrade their emission systems. And Rida also made an application in the past with the Environmental Investment Program of Empire State Development for the Crescent Duck Farm to improve its environmental performance. That was to construct a waste treatment process to decompose the farm's water's effluent. The Atlantis Aquarium Project, now known as the Long Island Aquarium and Exhibition Center, responded to a town RFP, and these are pictures of before it was built, clearly, to convert a 3.2 acre, underutilized shuttered lumberyard in an urban renewal area and turn it into a regional tourist destination, including the World Crass Aquarium and Hotel, all while saving the marine mammal and sea turtle stranding program from financial ruin. Most importantly, the project has spearheaded the revitalization of downtown Riverhead, realizing the primary objective that was set forth in the agreement with the town of Riverhead as a tourism destination and economic generator. This project has made an initial, not initial, over the years, a $43 million capital investment. It creates over 200 jobs a year. It generates over $900,000 in sales tax revenue, which comes back to this community in public safety funds. They draw over 400,000 year-round visitors that will frequent your businesses in the town of Riverhead. Some fail to remember infrastructure improvements that come when a project is developed, such as sidewalks and crosswalks and fiber optics and water mains, all make improvements to the area. Certainly an improvement over the form of blighted property, I'd say. I mentioned that they fully support the Marine Research Center and they supply them annually with food, medicine, a vehicle, a boat, insurance, and $90,000 a year while providing a home for them. This project has undeniably spawned new business in Riverhead. The Hyatt attracted investments by Georgia Malone, who has restored both 20 and 30 West Maines. The aquarium also attracted Michael Butler, who renovated the revitalized former Woolworth Building into a mixed-use workforce housing project. All I might add, we're assisted with Riverhead IDA financing. And other benefits you may not be aware of are the continued contributions to local organizations, internship programs, and environmentally friendly partnerships. This agency is very proud and pleased to have the developers of the aquarium continue their phased commitment to Riverhead. Sometimes bulldozers best. Another quick view at a Riverhead IDA project is the Summer Wind Project, 52 mixed-unit workforce housing project. And that eliminated former blight of a bowling alley and bar that was located there. It provided much-needed housing for our youth. Some other noteworthy projects include AdCam, industry leaders in manufacturing film and foam bonding and adhesive strips. This is, the Riverhead location was their world, world headquarters, came to Riverhead in 1997 while they were actively being courted by Georgia, North Carolina, and Virginia. Their initial investment was $7 million, they estimated 70 employees, and they graduated from the IDA with 125 employees. Is now fully on the tax rolls, paying $290,000 a year. Alter Pharmaceuticals, a premier manufacturer of generic and private-label ophthalmological pharmaceuticals. Original, I said that well, right? That took me some practice. Original investment was 6.3 million, they expanded again with another million, they projected 55 employees, they graduated with 120. Fully on the tax rolls, now paying $436,000 in tax revenue to the town. Dark Horse Restaurant, a nice corner gemstone in the town of Riverhead. The restaurant in Duplexes was another investment made by a local resident and historically restored, reusing the building with beautiful new uses. And of course, who did the town turn to when it couldn't get the theater off the ground after all the effort and financial resources were expended to save it? It could not do it without private investment and the assistance of Riverhead IDA. Now to take a look at some pending projects that were highlights of 2017. Georgica Green, also known as Riverhead Apartments, represents a $57 million direct investment in downtown Riverhead for a mixed-use workforce housing development on two parcels that had been vacant for over 20 years. Maybe there was a tenant in there for a few years or so, but fairly there was no interest in those parcels. The two parcels currently generate $34,000 in property taxes. The property will continue to pay the full taxes until this project is built and in year one will generate approximately $84,000 in taxes. That's a 60 percent increase over the current level. The property will generate over $6 million in property taxes over the life of the benefit, which is 4.7 million more than the property would generate if it stayed as it is. It's projected to create 116 construction jobs. Itself will generate three direct jobs for the property management, and the economic impact analysis projected about 27 direct jobs for the commercial tenancy space they'll build below. There was a lot to do about this project while it was being reviewed because of the 30-year pilot, but now I hope that I've provided an understanding of the pilot agreements. They don't necessarily mean an abatement, and this is a perfect example. The IDA believes that a tax abatement for the first 15 years of this project was a prudent opportunity for the town to invest in workforce housing. The agency worked tirelessly with outside housing and economic consultants to develop an exemption model spanning 15 years to meet funding needs, agency margins, and to meet required debt coverage ratios by the financing structures involved in the project. We worked to maintain the affordability of the project and provide sustained growth in the town's tax revenues over long term. We had to establish realistic forecasts of revenue and expenses in order to provide a predictable property tax expense model between years 16 and 30. That was to satisfy federal and state funding agencies who will maintain a vested interest in the success and affordability of the project for the entire 30-year span of its support. When complete, the project will have approximately 12,000 square feet of retail space and 115 units of workforce-to-market rate housing. From an economic development perspective, the project has tremendous potential to grow the local economy and will contribute to the long-term health and vitality of the downtown Another pending project recently authorized through the agency was John Wesley Village One, which has operated as a not-for-profit for 37 years in the town of Riverhead, providing affordable low-income housing for our seniors as a project-based Section 8 assisted complex of 115 units. With the recent authorization by the IDA, the not-for-profit goes on the tax rolls and begins to phase in new tax revenue. The IDA is assisting with the purchase of the new financing structure in an effort for the owners to reinvest in the development, make capital improvements, and phase in the new tax revenue for the sustainability of its residents. Lastly, I like to think the agency performance speaks for itself. This is only a snippet of what we've done. I don't know why the agency has been vilified in the eyes of many in the community. I hope after today, we have dispelled some myths, corrected information, and generated a renewed spirit on how lucky Riverhead is to have its own industrial development agency. There are local communities out there today trying to get such an authority. I truly believe in this one program in the economic developer's toolbox that makes a difference. But for the IDA, it would be a lot more difficult for us to attract businesses, to locate, stay for hospital and other non-for-profits to finance themselves and expand. And taking a risk of investment in Riverhead, although it's improving, is not an easy pitch. And with stiff competition both in and out of state, we are truly lucky to have our own IDA with the ability to control our own destiny when it comes to economic development. Riverhead knows what Riverhead wants for Riverhead, and the Riverhead IDA can make that happen. I thank you very much for your time and attention, and I leave you with embrace your IDA.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I cut that down from two hours.
Good job.
Any questions?
I do have a few questions. So one of my questions is the fee structure. So somebody comes in for an IDA application, and how is our fee structure done and how do we compare to other IDAs as far as our fee structure goes?
We're cheaper.
What was that? Well, I did, I just looked up, you know, basically when they come, the application fee is $2,000 for the first $5 million, $4,000 for the over $5 million, right? And then our administrative fee seems to be lower than other agencies. So I'm just curious why we run that way. Like our administrative fee, and then also where it goes. Our administrative fee is 3/4 of 1 percent for the first $10 million, a quarter of 1 percent between $10 million and $20 million, and 1/10th of 1 percent of the financial assistance over $20 million. Whereas Suffolk County has, they're at 3/4 up to the first $15 million, and they remain at half of 1 percent, up to $25 million. So that's a big difference from what we have, and I'm just curious why our fees are so different.
We are clearly a smaller municipality. We have struggled to attract investments. We're a smaller agency and we are more competitive.
But I mean, that's pretty competitive. I mean, how do you view, how are the other agencies, the other agencies throughout? Do you monitor this throughout Nassau and Suffolk County and New York State for the agencies? How competitive are we with our rates for other towns our size?
We're about the same as the other towns. In New York State, you know, when you get to a county-level IDA, they also attract much larger projects, they have a greater geographic area to cover and have industrial properties that they can actually fit a larger corporation on. We are actually industrial property poor despite Calverton because we can't invest in there right now.
But we're still doing projects in the $54, $50 million range. I mean, all projects are pretty big.
The project we did this last year was the largest in the IDA's agency's history.
For the Riverhead?
Yeah.
But what about Conifer? Well, how much was that at 17?
I don't remember how much Conifer was. I think it was, I honestly don't recall.
And then the Marriott was also fairly large.
About...
That was over 20, I think, or close to 20?
Actually, I don't have...
These are just, you know, food for thought, that's all.
Well, can I ask why you would want to raise the fees?
Very good food for thought.
Well, because I think that, you know, maybe in 1980, in 1990, in the beginning of 2000, I think that Riverhead was a challenge to get people to come here. I don't think we're any longer in that same position. I think our market share is much better. I think we're really a regional destination at this point. I think 58 is a regional destination at this point, you know, with the number of hotels coming in. I think downtown is also an offshoot of the regional destination that we have on 58. So I think it would be, you know, I think that our value at this point is higher. I think the economy is better at this point. You know, we're not in 2008 anymore, it's, you know, it's 10 years later. And so my question is, is this something that would be considered to look at again?
Tracy, would you mind sitting at the table?
Oh, sure. Yeah, sorry.
That's a good idea.
Let me just close out of here.
You don't care?
Well, certainly since 1980, development has crept out more eastward, so I don't know that we, you know, I think more people are willing to come to Riverhead now.
And I think one of the other fees that I don't know, and I don't know if we collect them or not, is the annual reporting and compliance fee?
Yes.
So what is our fee structure for that?
I believe it's $250 for non-bond projects, $300 for bond projects, and the board just changed the fee structure recently to include mixed use with a number of apartments and retail.
So that's an annual fee we get?
It's an annual fee when they do their reporting.
Okay.
It's an annual fee that the agency gets.
The agency receives these fees. These are not fees that come to the town of Riverhead.
No, no, I know that, because like I was, just if you look at your budgets in 2015, for the revenue coming in, where is that, other operating revenues there?
Might be the compliance fees, yes. You're looking at the Paris report, so the line items are, it's difficult to compare the Paris with our budget.
I was just kind of curious where that money's coming in. Okay, so that's that money coming in. And then my other, I have a couple other questions. Under the local labor policy, so under the IDA, the local labor policy states that you need to use Riverhead residents first and then sort of branch out from there. And there's a contract completion report that needs to be done for each project. Where is, I couldn't find that, and I was wondering how that's monitored and...
That says in our policy, there's a contract completion report?
Yeah, you have a local labor policy, right? Where anybody who receives IDA money is supposed to use local labor, is supposed to advertise locally.
We encourage local labor. We encourage local labor.
But they're also supposed to do a construction completion report?
Okay.
That goes to the IDA? And I'm just curious how that shifts?
Compliance report.
No, it's a construction completion report.
Right, but it'll come in the compliance report at the end of the year.
Okay, so then I'm wondering, how is that shared with the public? How is that monitored and then shared with the public so that we know that they're actually doing it? Do you get newspaper ads that show that? Do you show the number of employees for local Riverhead residents?
It's monitored within the agency.
But you're the agency.
And we don't, yes. And we don't, if a project does not use local labor, it will not break their obligation. As I said, the local labor is encouraged.
But what I'm saying is, if it's encouraged, how are we monitoring it to know that they're actually putting the ads in the newspaper and actually...
Oh, 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 well, the company is bidding for it.
Well, in the policy, it actually says that they need to do certain things, newspaper ads, this, that, and the other.
In our policy?
Yes, and then at the end of the construction period, they need to do a construction completion report showing how much of local labor they use and their efforts in doing that. So I'm just curious...
Just through the compliance report.
Okay, so there's no tally for each one?
No. No, that's extensive monitoring as well.
Well, it's part of the policy, right? And so then a couple of my other questions is for the IDA for marketing Riverhead, I'm just curious how the outreach is done, what promotional tools we use, and is this something that we can share together as part of cost-sharing stuff as we market Riverhead also?
Yeah, sure. We didn't do too much marketing this past year, actually, we didn't need to.
We always need to.
I run on a shoestring budget with no assistance from the government, no grant funding to support our agency. Our resources are limited, but I have always believed in a grassroots effort with networking through the professionals that bring development to the town of Riverhead. I was involved in a lot of, I used to do seminars and work with the colleges, et cetera. As far as print media, it's been, you know, I can do PR locally, and every once in a while there'd be print ads in the paper, or, you know, we have a website that needs to be updated.
But isn't that the charge of the IDA to reach outside of Riverhead? That's kind of what I'm asking, how are we reaching outside of Riverhead?
Yes, and actually, the Long Island, the Suffolk County IDAs have a roundtable about every quarter, and we're working on a collaborative marketing program, but it's very expensive.
But we're kind of competing with the other IDAs in the sense we're not, but we're to bring industry here, right? I mean, we want to market ourselves.
No, I will respectfully disagree with that, that we work very well with the other IDAs, we work together. I may not have a building or property to service Riverhead, and so I will call another IDA and say, hey, I've got this company. And so I will call another IDA and say, hey, I've got this company. I can't fit them here, and vice versa.
But that is, that I can understand, but my question is, is how, how as the IDA, are, are we marketing to, like, you know, if there's a, you know, an energy company that's thinking about going to New Jersey, how are we bringing them here? What, what's our outreach past Riverhead?
Let me, let me, let me just say this here. I've been around, uh, and I'm involved with this organization for seven years. And one of my first questions was pretty much the same. We have other entities within the town and within the county or wherever, wherever you want to go that should be working more closely together because you need economies of scale. You can't do this, this little thing very well. We're not doing it very well, but we'd like to. You've got the Economic Development Corporation, uh, you've got, uh, EFCAL and so forth, and you could branch out. We should be doing a better job. I think we got sidetracked to a degree because of an inability to get a lot of that marketing accomplished with our budget. And we need to revitalize that. So I'm very happy to hear you say, the supervisor, that we should be looking at things like this. I embrace them. If I could get other agencies together with your, okay, I think we have an opportunity to do a better job.
Well, I think that's what this is part of all about, to see what resources you're using now, and then combine them so that we, so that we can do that. And I know, we can do that.
There's also a lot of opportunities to work with the county in general and their economic development office as well as the state. I mean, the state is very aggressive in their economic development activities. And we're certainly always invited to a lot of those types of events where, you know, these big investors are, are coming in and learning about New York as a whole, and then, you know, maybe whatever their niche seems to be, who fits that niche the best, you know, within the state. So, I mean, when we're talking about entities in other states, international, this, that is way beyond what we as an agency are able to do. But we do have the relationships with the people who are making those things happen. They know about us, we know about them, and Tracy is very, um, active in those synergistic opportunities.
Yeah, when the state gets a large response for an RFP or a company looking, an email is sent out, and we'll respond with our specs if we are able to. Amazon was probably the most recent. We were tied up, you know, we couldn't respond to that, but that's an example. That's a big example.
So then, so then that, that's one of my questions. So if, if projects, you know, like even on, on the website, and I know the website, as you were saying, that, that, that the website needs a lot of updating, you know? And in fairness to the public, to be able to have the transparency, I think there's, there's quite a few things because it's frustrating. Um, I think when the public looks at it, you have a projects page there, and all it is is a Google map.
I've got it.
There's, there's nothing listed on pu-, on, on the public, on the public list there. Um, you know, to find a meeting, you need like three clicks to find a meeting, and then you have to go to another whole thing to find the meeting minutes afterwards. Um, there's no agenda, current agendas posted. You know, there's just draft agendas. There's no agendas before the, before the meetings on there. Um, they're all listed as drafts.
Yeah, they're drafts because they're not, um, they're not authorized until they're authorized by the board and accepted by the board. That's why drafts are up there. So after a meeting, they accept the agenda.
For that day?
For that day.
But even the drafts from last year are still listed as draft? All the meetings from last year are still listed as drafts?
Even though, um, I'm wondering if as a board, we can get a list of the projects. I mean, I think they should be on the website, yes.
Well, we're supposed to get a list. That's one of the other things. Anytime you go from your standard abatement, which is, you know, this 50% of the real tax assessment, right?
You can verify every project, not only before and after.
So, and so, because I don't know, you, there's a letter that's supposed to come to the whole town board, to the school district, to the water district, to the sewer district, so.
I have the certified mailings for every single one of those.
So I get them certified mail?
Yes, you do. Actually, I hand deliver yours. I handed deliver one yesterday.
But wasn't that a project that already happened?
Right, so you get a notification of the public hearing coming and the pilot, and the project being reviewed, and then you will get another notice that says it's been adopted, it's been filed with the town of assessors.
So like, there's a public hearing?
You get a full pilot.
So there's a public hearing, say, this, this meeting coming up. When do all of the entities, when are they all notified?
They have it already.
They have it, they've been notified.
Like yourselves, we have 10 days.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Um, what else? I'm just trying to figure this out.
When are the town board agendas put up?
I think they're put up the day before. The day before, we do 24 hours before, but it's not a draft.
So I did, so I did go, um, and I can look into the legality of a draft versus it being adopted at, at a meeting. I don't know how we would do that, but.
Or a statement to assess.
Councilman Hubbard asked me about our agendas, and I, and I went back the whole year to see what our average was. It was 4.5 days before the meetings. But again, I, I am one person. I am, I do get sick. I do have computer glitches, you know, it happens. But I do the best I can to get the agendas up, you know, the week before.
But like I said, all of last year's are still listed as drafts.
Well, I, I have to keep up with the website as well.
Let me just add there.
Yeah.
The website definitely needs a lot of work.
It does, needs a lot of work.
Which requires a lot of time and a lot of money, or money is a form of labor. And we're kind of tight down. So we've got to come up with ways, uh, with the help of the town board and others who fit into this, is what we do, where we get the money, so forth and so on. But I couldn't agree more. Tracy and I just had a discussion about that very recently again, that that's one thing where we really fail. And what I recognize is, is when I do the same thing and go online for some information and realize, well, that's fine, that's fine, but then it kind of goes into the ether, and that can't be.
Well, you guys actually got, you got a nice budget bump last year, right? Because you got an additional other revenue. You had, had almost 276 more thousand more come in last year, so you guys should have.
That goes.
Yeah, but you guys.
If you don't watch out and you spend it, all of a sudden, you're looking for money.
But, but in the budget last year, you had a big, a big bump. What was that from?
We could go years without getting any proj-, years take, projects take years before they close. And we average maybe three, three per year. Well, you're talking about the budget.
Well, no, talk about a budget, a budget if there's money for the website, so I would hope you would get that updated this way.
And I also.
It's the money you need to, for the continuous maintenance. I mean, you can update your website and pay someone to do that, that's fine. It's the ongoing maintenance that's the challenge because we only have one person. And so we'd rather have her reviewing and processing applications than updating an agen-, you know, not so much an agenda, but updating, um, you know, reading dates or whatever, you know, on an annual, that kind of.
But I think the public, I mean, I think that's what.
I understand.
And I think even in your presentation, you mentioned that, that the IDA gets a bad rap, and, and part of that is the transparency to the public and providing that information to the public. So it kind of, you know, it, it, they run synergistically. That, that to not have that, that kind of, um, relationship is the transparency part of it, whether it's the cost benefits that's provided before, um, something comes before the IDA, whether it's having, having the follow-up information there, whether it's having the projects listed there, whether it's having the, 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 the assessor's, um, reports and the tax abatements before the meeting. So when you have the public hearings, people are coming informed because not knowing is very, very frustrating. I mean, I'm sure you guys, you hear it.
Believe me, I would love to be 100% perfect, but as I've said, the resources are limited, and I would like to, uh, create a budget in there to hire. And I'm currently looking at a consultant to assist me, but it's, um, it's a lot of work.
So you can raise your prices.
But I'm so, okay, but I do have to.
Okay, back to, I have a couple of questions. We keep backing on.
To survival of the program.
I appreciate this, and I can tell you, I, I know a lot about the IDA. And so when all that banter and that, that blue cup gets out there every two years in the summertime, I, I would have expected to see this long before. And I'm glad you didn't have it.
Well, I'll tell you, this agency has taken the position to try and stay out of the banter. And so before an election, we didn't want to make a presentation. Then after the election, we didn't want to make a presentation, so we waited for the invitation. And that was really to stay out, out of political.
We were doing that for a couple of election cycles then.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions back to.
The public don't, you realize, they don't know. And if you don't sell yourself.
That's why, this needs to be on our website, and, and we are aware of that.
The general public don't know all these issues that the taxes go over.
It's not a matter of being transparent. It's really a ma-, I, I mean, I'd love for this stuff to be up there so people can go and look. It's all positive, there's nothing negative about it.
Okay, so there was an increase in the budget last year of 276,000, or the, the annual, the income?
Income.
From the fees and from.
From a project.
From a project that you take in. That's not a guaranteed income every year, correct?
No.
Okay, so.
There were many times.
Salaries, I know that Tracy has told me, you know, I've held a paycheck because we haven't had any applications that have come in and, you know, that the IDA has struggled in the past when there hasn't been, um.
Yeah.
Applicants willing to come into town or even wanting to file an application.
Well, closings got detained.
So my question to you is that in raising the fees and competing with other IDAs which came up, and I guess my biggest question would be is Suffolk County. If you don't give an applicant the abatements or the incentives, can they say, okay, Riverhead's not giving us enough, we're going to Suffolk County?
Absolutely.
Okay, and does it, I also saw in your presentation that you have never rolled a project back to zero.
That's correct.
Does the county roll projects back to zero? So if they're paying $34,000 a year now, and then can, does the county, and have, in your experience in knowing about certain projects, does the county roll those projects back to zero, some of them?
We're going to ask Suffolk County to come in also, so if you don't know, for sure.
But if you do know, I'm not asking you which projects, but.
We do, we do know that they roll one back to zero.
I, I think it's part of their UTEP as, as a standard.
It's a part of a different program, I believe.
No, it's, it's part of the IDA, IDA, UTEP, and their standard. Uh, uni-, uniform tax exempt policy, uh, that they can erode the tax base if they want.
Okay, so if they're paying $34,000 a year now, then their, Riverhead, we continue to take that $34,000 a year, and if they did go to Suffolk County, then Suffolk County could, under the UTEP, and so could Riverhead IDA under the UTEP, roll it back to zero.
I believe we're both under the real tax property abatement, which is A 483B, about real tax, property tax abatement. I believe the county and our town fall under the same jurisdiction, which is, uh, the basic real property tax abatement provided is based upon the equivalent of section 485B of the New York State Real Property Tax Law. This section provides a 50% real property tax abatement on the increased assessed value in the first year, 45% real property tax abatement in the second year, a 40% abatement in the third year, and thereafter declining 5% per year over a 10-year period. But the other one is the enhanced real property tax is really what, what our IDA really does because that's, that's the, that's the like baseline, and then there's the enhanced property tax, and that's what the IDA decides back and forth on.
Please, if you can answer my question.
Where it gets confusing is there's deviation and enhancement.
Okay.
So enhancement is kind of the idea of downtown. It's a distressed property. We're going to enhance the benefit to make this happen. The town board's made an urban renewal area. The building's been vacant for 15 years. What can we do to enhance it? That's not a deviation because that's part of the policy. The policy is to enhance the benefit, to fix that blight. If you didn't have the blight and you were doing the same economic thing, it would be a deviation. So you have to look at the character of the project to fit it into the category to see whether it fits in enhancement. Is this thing that we're doing, the, well, the aquarium? I mean, it is sort of like the poster child for, what would you do to keep it from going to Bay Shore at that time, which the town was in a hot contest with Bay Shore, to get the aquarium here? And what do you do to make that happen? You enhance the benefit to keep the dilapidated building, get that rebuilt. It's not a deviation. If it was a beautiful building and you were trying to attract the aquarium and you wanted to get that benefit, well, then you'd say that's a deviation because there's an existing working thing.
Project.
You're going to replace it with something, so you're deviating from your policy. So it gets to be a little, it's not quite as simple as the, the one line.
So, back to the fees. So you feel that the fees being at a lower rate than the county will bring more people to the town of Riverhead to see if they were eligible for the incentives, rather than having them go to count, the county and pay a larger fee, they might start with the Riverhead IDA and follow through with the Riverhead IDA?
It could be one thought process. I mean, they, they have to feed more mouths as well. I'm sure their fees are, are increased to feed their budget. Um, I, they may have increased their fees. We were all fairly competitive at one point, but I think they've changed their fee structures.
So when was the last, have we done a recent analysis?
We did.
So when was the last analysis we did for, for our fee structure? So that's a common fee structure?
So is, are our fees similar to the Islip IDA and to, I know that Southampton right now is trying to get their IDA status back because they had their IDA status taken away from them, if I'm not mistaken?
Can, can, again, they, they had, they got their IDA shortly after ours, and they didn't do any projects. And so they lost their authority, and their charter was taken away. One of our projects in the old days, when you needed a bond cap to do the federal tax of, of baited bonds, they actually gave us their volume cap in, in several years because they couldn't use it. So they're, they're in.
So can you incentivize other projects? Now they're talking about all this revitalization on the Riverside part of Southampton. Can those people come to your IDA to seek incentives?
By invitation of the municipality, uh, it's my understanding, go into another municipality, but I believe Suffolk County's already on that.
It's, it's, it's very difficult because our.
That's school taxes, too.
Our, our charter, the county's all over. Says within the boundary of the town of Riverhead.
Okay.
Which doesn't mean that if, if, there isn't some opportunity to work with the town of Southampton, but if you just read the charter, simply states within the town of Riverhead.
And now the Islip Town Board is the IDA board. But it's my understanding in speaking to board members on the Islip IDA that they do a lot more deviation than they do enhancement because they have a lot of their industrial parks that are already built out and businesses that have left, and now they're trying to get those buildings filled up again. So I, I just, um, I found that interesting in your presentation and yours about the deviation versus enhancement. Um, so I got to the roll back to zero, and if someone is not satisfied, because one of the ones that I had questions about was allied materials, allied building materials, because I know that allied building materials have gone to the county first before they had come to the Riverhead IDA because one of the principals told me that they were looking to the county for incentives. And then I think that we offered them, you know, the lower application fees and.
We gave them the stand, oh, well.
Were the standard than what the county would charge, and so that's why they came here. So I also heard in your presentation that you take and review applications before an application is made to the planning board and the town board. So people will come and. And, and a lot of that is brought through your communication with the community development agency or, you know, the supervisor's office. If somebody is interested in coming here, they will send them over to the IDA to see if they're eligible for incentives. And I just have asked in the past, and I would ask again, to get some sort of report as to how many, um, businesses actually come to the IDA for incentives, and they're told that they're not eligible for them. Because we hear about all the, um, agencies that do come to the IDA and get the incentives, but we don't hear about the ones that had wanted to get incentives and were rejected by the IDA.
Well, at one point, at one, okay, I'll try, I'll try, I'll try and do that. Yeah, I mean, your car dealership's on Route 58, came to me. But it, you know, right off the bat, by law, they're not allowed. So, and they'll say, well, a car dealership in Nassau County got IDA benefits, and there is criteria that needs to be met by law that will immediately make a phone call, go away. Is that the list that you like, or you, you know?
I'm just, I'm just curious at the, the process of that because.
That list is, that list is online, actually. That's the Uniform Project Evaluation Criteria Policy, correct?
Well, she's looking for actual list of the businesses, I think, is what she's saying.
The businesses that were coming to town that said, we want IDA incentives, and how do we go about getting them? And you said, because there's, I hear from a lot of the public that the IDA gives everybody that comes to them benefits. So I am just curious as to if there are applicants that come to you that you say, no, you're not eligible for.
There's a vetting process that happens before they get to the board level. I'm not going to waste volunteers' times when they don't meet basic legal criteria to come to the board. Do I get numerous phone calls? Yes, absolutely. Got a couple recently, Cement Places, uh, received it, um, uh, the Horse Farm came, and we met with them. There are a number of businesses that I help that will have no chance in heck to get IDA benefits, such as Mustess Brewery, or, um, who I assisted in finding a place. Um, recently I helped someone else find a place. We don't get paid for that, but I'm. We don't get paid for that, but I'm trying to fit businesses into small structures in downtown as well, or find sites outside of Riverhead. We offer those services.
And I have to say, it would be a priority for me to see projects that did get the benefit, as opposed to seeing projects that were turned away. And you said we got it in the pocket, but I can't...
I have typically given a packet to the supervisor, I can make copies.
So does she have, does she have it?
There's a list in the book right there.
Oh, this, the book you just gave, okay. But I think it should be for public consumption.
Okay.
Right, I mean, that, that should be, anybody should be able to see. I mean, it, it's really the community that's supporting these businesses. So, I mean, you should be able to see the businesses that got IDA benefits, the cost benefit analysis that was done with them, their terms of the agreement that they, that they received, and, you know, and then you have, you know, what their clawbacks conditions are. And, and if they met the project, the, the local labor policy.
I have another question. How do you measure, you know, we talk about a blight risk. I mean, what's to keep any business from coming and asking for benefits, saying, well, we're leaving? How do you measure?
Well, we, we ask for letters. Uh, we're facing this in a, in a big way in Riverhead right now. Um, I know the supervisor's aware, through the CDA office. They're made offers in and out of state. Uh, I said, well, do you have letters of offers? I will, I will judge by that. I will contact other agencies if they're gonna relocate out of, uh, out of Riverhead into, into Suffolk County or Nassau County, I'll reach out to those, to, um, to see if there's actually a competitive issue there.
Or Pennsylvania, or New Jersey, or Virginia?
Pennsylvania's big right now.
Tracy, there's been, uh, it's been mentioned over the past couple of years with different projects about, projects come in and say, well, we can't build if we don't get IDA benefits. And what is the process to, or they say, we, we can't get the financing. The financing requires us to have IDA benefits. Is there actually any legal documentation from the financial people showing that they do request this for this project, or it's mandatory for this project? Or is it, as the public assumes, that somebody just walks in and says, yeah, bank told me I need to get it, so I'm, I'm here, can I get it?
As of most recent, uh, the banks are looking for P threes. Uh, it lowers their risk, so it's natural. And, and many times it is in commitment letters. And we rely heavily on, on the financial institutions to do a full analysis of a company, uh, if they're gonna fund them, if they're not gonna fund them. And, um, you know, if a business comes in, one of the things we wanna look for is long-term viability of a project. And, and an IDA, assistance of an IDA lowers the risk for someone to come in. It frees up cash flow in the infancy years, particularly for startups, like the one we're currently exploring now with Conicare. And so, and we also have our own CFO, and we've called in other financial experts to review, uh, the financials of companies, to see where they are, if they can meet certain cost benefit ratios, certain margins, et cetera.
But is there any, like, I mean, do you make them show three banks that they've been to and they're all asking for IDA benefits? Do you, do you need to see that they've shopped around for their banks? Because any bank's gonna say, yeah, get, you know, get IDA benefits, that's great, bank loves that.
No, not every bank is gonna say that. They struggle with the financing right now.
But I understand they struggle, but I mean, do you require them to go to, to show that, that every bank that they're, that they're seeking to do business with is requiring the IDA benefit? Or is it just kind of what they bring in when they come in?
Most of the companies have established good relationships with the financial institutions that they use, and I don't know as if they, they probably do try and shop around to compete, but no, I have not asked for them to go shop for several banks and prove that they have to have IDA benefits or can get financing from someone else.
Uh, and one of my other questions is, is you have...
I'm sorry?
A standard operating procedure for these developers.
I would think.
You have a Uniform Project Evaluation Criteria Policy that you guys set out in June. So I just have some question, questions about it. A lot of them recover, require a market feasibility study. And where, where is that shared with, with the town board, as well as the other eight municipalities?
I, I put several in your book today, um, and we have, not all projects are required for the market feasibility study.
It's, I, I'm gonna say for your thing, most of them will have it, though, a, a, a good percentage. When they are, when they are required or are asked, it's part of the criteria?
They're in our file.
And how is that shared with everybody else?
If they would like to foil it, they can see it.
No, 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 but you're required to tell the other eight, the school district, the sorority district, water district, town board, when somebody's coming in for an IDA thing, when they're coming in from IDA, IDA abatements or enhanced, enhanced abatement, that you're supposed to notify the other agencies. They're supposed to be apprised of, of why they're asking for it. So that's what I'm asking. If, do you include the market study, or if you don't, can you from moving forward?
I do not mail out all that stuff, no, I do not. If they would like it, they can request it.
But do you give a synopsis of it for, for us then?
Do I write a synopsis? I, I hand out the, the study, and there's usually a summary page right in the beginning of the summary.
Oh, I thought you said you didn't share it. That we had to foil it? Or we don't, you don't, you share it or you don't share it?
She was referring to the public, not, not to the...
Oh, to the agents, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my, one other question is, is did we, I know, I didn't think we always had it, but why is one of our, our, our projects now market rate housing projects? Why are we giving IDA pro, I mean, is this something we wanna do as an IDA in this town? Give out to market rate housing projects, IDA benefits?
Well, in economic development, if we flood the downtown area with low, only low income housing, it wouldn't provide a very good economic balance for disposable income. So the intent is to not only do affordable housing, but we also wanna encourage market rate housing in an area in a downtown that's not as attractive as some others at the moment. So that was the intent of the, um, market rate housing in the, the project criteria.
And have you had any success shopping this around yet?
We're working on one now.
Sounds good, and it makes sense.
And, and on that, in the mixed use with the market rate housing or with the affordable housing, and then there's retail on the first floor, is the retail getting the incentive also?
Uh, in some cases, we have not. Uh, there is a retail exemption, and this gets complicated in the, um, general, in the general municipal law now for IDAs. We're not allowed to induce retail, but there are exceptions. There's tourist destination, there is, um, a retail component, for instance, everyone wants a movie theater. We can do a movie theater, because there is not one in Riverhead.
Bowling alley.
A bowling...
Predated amendment to the law.
So there are exceptions. Uh, urban renewal areas and empire zones allow for retail. Luckily, our downtown is both. But we have actually, um, apportioned, uh, assessments or abatements for a couple of buildings downtown, and excluded the retail portion on the ground floor, and only abated a portion relative to the commercial renovations in the building.
And which ones did we do that on?
Twenty and thirty West Main, or twenty West Main.
So the bottom floor is, did not receive the abatement?
Right, it's kind of complicated, but yes, that's how we did.
Can you talk a little bit about the hotels, um, benefits that hotels got? I, and I will get a copy of the, um...
Sure.
I'll ask them.
I gotta remember what I put in that, but, uh, let me just write this down. Is it a K or a C?
C.
Is that a K?
Yeah, yeah. So you're aware of the Hyatt? Again, that is, uh, it, by contract with the town, and I can get you, you probably have a copy, but that is actually a phased project, and they have met every phase so far that they promised, they met all their obligations to the town, and then some. The town sadly has not met all the obligations to Atlantis. However, uh, that was part of their project and always anticipated.
Is the new boutique hotel and the restaurant, is that part of a phase also?
Yes, it is.
How many phases are left?
Uh, it was four phases, and I think that was three.
So there's another phase coming, possibly?
I hope so. They're doing a terrific job.
They are neat to make.
And, and as a result of their investment, by the way, I just, I think it's, it's worthy of noting that they've made other investments in the town of Riverhead. They redid the East Lawn Building without any incentives. They have now going to, uh, renovate the other building, which Joe told me was not renovatable. He's gonna waste all the money he saved on the IDA incentives to renovate and historically restore that building next to, uh, the Preston House.
The house.
So, I'm sorry?
But they offer profit businesses that they're redoing.
I'm sorry?
They're, they're investing in the community that, that has invested in that.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and also the...
And that's, right, that's...
And there was also concern about the aquarium going to a not-for-profit status, which then the three hundred and fifty thousand that they're paying now would go to zero, correct?
As of right, right. If they were a nonprofit aquarium, it would be zero as of right.
And that, I believe, is the question that I had for Conicare when they were here. And now that they've partnered with Northwell Health, they weren't always partnered with Northwell Health seven years ago when they first came in proposing their project. But now that they are partnered with Northwell Health, they could also go for a not-for-profit status, is what he said, or seek the IDA benefits and make pilot payments.
Just to go back, can we...
Yeah, yeah.
Can you, I know you were in the middle of answering.
Um, so, uh, many of the hotels were here before I came, and there was, um... Okay, so Holiday Inn Express, uh, received, I think, a reduced, if not only sales tax, but maybe a reduced five-year, but there were no hotels...
Holiday Inn.
In, in the area at the time. And, um, Hilton Garden Inn came in as a two-phase project. They made an investment on fifty-eight, and it took a number of years before you could get to phase two. I would say six years, so, um, normally we would not do...
But they probably stated at the first one, they wouldn't go for the second phase for an IDA abatement.
I'm sorry?
But they did publicly state at their first phase that they would not go for a second phase IDA break.
Uh, I was not here for that, and I don't recall that, but that was part of their application, so I'm surprised.
It's in the minutes.
In the minutes of an IDA meeting?
From that one, yeah.
From the original Hilton Garden Inn?
I, I think there's a little confusion there, because when we were crafting the documents, I was concerned, see, the, the abatement goes on the parcel. And so, uh, Mr. Browning had two parcels originally, and he didn't meet the density requirement on the one that he was building. So he couldn't transfer the development right from the adjoining parcel, because it wasn't a sending parcel, and he didn't have a receiving parcel. So we, we required him to combine the two parcels into one tax map. That, the, the lease leaseback then made that one parcel off the tax roll, and the pilot payment paid, payment in lieu of taxes. So our agreements specifically stated with Mr. Browning that when he built the second hotel, he had to come back to the agency, because we didn't want to, him to believe, or any subsequent purchaser of his facility to believe that the second hotel would be under the same abatement that the first hotel was under. Otherwise, we would have just lost the opportunity to receive any revenue from the second hotel. So we very carefully crafted the agreements, so that when he brought the second hotel, he had to come back to the agency for new pilot terms. So his pilot terms are, the tax he pays is rising on the first hotel, and the tax he pays rises on the second hotel, even though they're on one parcel. And so the colloquy with the board at the time of his first application dealt with Mr. Browning. You understand that because you have to combine these parcels, you are not getting an approval at this point for your second hotel, because we don't know what that is, and you'll have to prosecute a new application. And Mr. Browning honorably understood that and agreed to it, and that's how it proceeded, so I, I think sometimes...
So that, okay, that's a clarification, that's the way it says?
The history of some of these, you know, uh, they get to be very complicated. Route fifty-eight at that location, he has had trouble with his access and agreements with the county and the state. It's a state road, a county road. It, it, it's, it's a complicated site.
And I just wanna take the opportunity to, for the public's benefit, that it's not the Hilton and Holiday Inn and Marriott that are getting benefits. These are local private developers who actually have to, and correct me if I'm wrong, apply to these entities and pay them for their brand. It is your local people, it is not the Hilton, it is not, um, these large corporations that are taking advantage of your local municipality. Is that correct, Mr. Browning? Brian, thank you.
And so I have one other question, you mentioned a standard abatement.
Yes.
What is our standard abatement?
The four eighty-five B. It is ten years, beginning at fifty percent of the increase to assessed value, declining five percent each year thereafter.
Okay, could you, but that's not the enhanced, because if you're, if they're go, so most everybody is not standard, is that correct? Most abatements were given out, or, how many, of those nineteen projects, how many are standard?
Uh, well, they were mostly downtown, so they were all stand, they were, there was more aggressive abatement in downtown. It was a hundred percent.
Okay, so of the nineteen, how many were standard?
Um, I actually would have to go and, and count them. They're actually, they've, well, standard is not...
It's fifty percent of the full, full assessed value, so...
The whole board building was...
Did you set it the enhanced?
No, they're all, downtown was different. The board set a different policy six years ago, um, to be more aggressive in revitalizing downtown. And, and it has worked. In six years, you went from probably an eighty percent vacancy to about, you know, I'd say more than fifty percent.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just questioning what are, what are, if, if we're saying standard abatement, what, what are we defining as our standard abatement? Or stand, or, or enhanced abatement? Because I see a lot of the other IDs, other IDAs, they tend to be very flexible. Um, you know, I could see a new business coming in, sometimes in the first two years, there's a bit of a heavier abatement in the first two years, but it drops off very much by the third year or fourth year, depending on what, what the project is coming in. Um, and, and, you know, I, I would imagine that each project coming in, each owner coming in, each location coming in, each new use coming into our area, um, would, would be based on exactly what they're bringing to the community and, and really what the IDA sees as their need to enhance them here. And it doesn't seem that that would any, would have anything to do with a standard abatement, especially an enhanced abatement.
Just, just quickly here, six of the companies actually received, um, seven or five or four-year abatement. There's a number of factors, and I think I mentioned some, that come into play. Their finances, their need, the debt coverage ratios, the project they're doing. Not everyone just gets the standard abatement, or we give them more. There's an analysis that's done with a number of factors, and, and, um, so six of them have less than, um, a seven or five-year abatement. And...
That's what I'm saying, I think this would go a long way to sharing this information with the public, um, so that everybody can understand what, what goes on.
Five more of them have the standard abatement, and then downtown probably covers the rest. Um, I, uh, would most confidently say that this agency probably squeaks the best benefit packages out of the companies when they come. We're tighter than other agencies. I think our benefit packages are, uh, pretty tight.
But I think sharing that and celebrating that would be, would be good to bring, you know, if we're bringing these jobs in and we're creating more jobs, and, and we're working with the businesses to, to, to come in here. I mean, I don't think businesses wanna come in here and see in the newspaper, oh my God, IDA, IDA, IDA. Um, and without information, that's what happens. Um, and if we're trying to grow our economy and grow our, our need to bring businesses in here, I think we need, I think we need to do that.
And I, I, I hope that this board will join us in, in reaching that goal and in working toward that, because I, we all agree, you know, we, we try to get the word out and the benefits. This is one example of what we're trying to do. We've met with the school board recently to kind of share this information. So any opportunities that you can identify, we'd be happy to explore and participate in.
This was a good experience, the school board?
Yes, very good, very good. I think it was the same reaction that maybe Jim had, about, thank you so much.
So maybe what we, maybe what we could do is schedule again to meet in, in six months. Um, I think we're kind of on the same page with what we, what, what we're, you know, how to accomplish this, how to get the town moving forward, and to how to accomplish the goals that we all, all looking forward to, and we can see, you know, what we're able to, to do.
I have one more question. You had indicated that the state was a couple of years behind in reporting, so...
Empire zone, empire zone.
So, but you're, the people that are the recipients of the IDA benefits have to report to you by March, I believe you said?
Um, I asked for them back this year, February fifteenth. And the sales tax has to be the last day of February.
And then you have to report that information to the state?
Correct.
And I imagine that you probably have to...
Our deadline's March thirtieth.
You probably have to chase a lot of these people around to get you the information that you need.
Well, you get an extra fee every time that happens.
Yeah.
That's worked quite well.
So, I guess my question...
I think our IDA took the lead in that, by the way.
I guess what would be helpful to me to see, and that would probably be helpful to the public to see, and it might even, um, help you with the amount of information that you have to put on the website regarding any particular applicant, would be, you know, one sheet that says, you know, these are the incentives, this is the time period, this is what they're paying now, this is what they will be paying, this is the number of jobs that they'll be create, creating, this is the square footage that they're building. And then, when they report back to you the next year, then you have the same sheet as to what they've accomplished? Yes.
And we also do have just recently...
They're available, blood type and their phone number.
Yeah.
Well, that's just, that's information that they're required to report.
And we are, we are sourcing that inside, I, I... I hired somebody just this past year to create, because it, the job is overwhelming, and our resources are little. I already work quite, quite long hours, and there's only so much you can get done in a day. We hired someone to create spreadsheets, and we're working on them. Some of the data that was, that I have is absent. It's got, it takes research. Historically, some of the data in the Paris was inaccurate, just, not just from human error, but actually the calculations in the Paris. So, we are working on that, and, and we also just-
I was just going to say, we've recently invested in a software program that will allow us to generate economic indicators and expected growth for the community. So, we think that'll be a real positive benefit and something else that we can share in a very easily readable and accessible manner for residents, and so we just recently did that.
Yeah, I mean, just in layman's terms, you know, that this is the square footage. This is the number of jobs they're creating. This is like, you know, and this is what they've done, and this is what they have.
Right, and this is what we expect will be the result.
Right, because I know the supervisor had a question about the clawback. So, if it's, I know the analysis that you go through in order to determine what the benefits are. So, if you just put them in a layman's form so that, you know, these are, okay, so I don't have to go back through the file and say, "Okay, well, he said that he was going to," you know?
No, I can't wait till we have, till we have all the very accurate numbers. A lot of this stuff I had to go back and do by hand, because-
Well, that's what I'm saying, as the benefits are being given, you can start those sheets as you've given.
Yeah, we're doing that.
Okay.
And then, one other question. I know recently you had to submit the, I guess it's the, part of Gatsby now, what the taxes would have been had they had the IDA ones. Do you know what the number is on that?
Yeah, you have that on your book, too. But, you see, that's, that's the big thing with the IDAs. What would it have been? And our argument, and I will maintain that argument, is they would not have been because they were not induced by the IDA. You would not have that building. You would not have those taxes. So, it's an argument with, with me and the auditors in the ABO office all the time. Because they, they claim that as the exemption. And I say, "Well, you're not exempting something that's not there." And it's not there until we get there.
Well, you also have businesses that got the IDA tax break. I mean, you have Suffolk County National Bank, you know? They got the IDA tax break for 10 years, and at the end of 10 years, we lost the business. So, you also have those kind of things that go on also. So, we need to keep you mindful of that, you know?
But we lose the investment, and we look at things as a project. So, for instance, the bank.
We lost the jobs, you know?
You've lost some jobs as a merger many years after the IDA has graduated from the IDA. Many years. Some of those, the numbers on the projects, and I'll have to explain that chart for you. I just gave you some history of the projects that are there. That's not the entire history, and there's numbers of active projects in there. Suffolk County National Bank was years ago. And, and you still have the bank, the infrastructure, the people, a business there doing the same thing that was there before.
No, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, you know, we need to be mindful of that, too. That, that's a risk we, you know, that the town takes when giving IDA benefits. And, you know, you want the business to stay. And it's becoming very common on Long Island that businesses are coming in, and we need to be mindful of that as, as breaks are given out, that a lot of businesses come in, they run out their IDA break, and then they move, you know? So, that, that-
It's lucky we never had that happen.
No, I know, but, but it's something we need to be mindful of as moving forward, because that has happened quite a few times.
And it speaks, speaks back to the retention efforts that I do see coming in the future.
I know the other IDAs are facing it now. They're coming back. The businesses are coming back. They've called me. They said, "Are you, you know, are you seeing this?" And I'm having, we have several flight risks on the table now. And we may have to go back to the table and negotiate just to keep them.
You're still getting improved properties, though?
Sure, sure. I mean, as long as you keep the business there and they're paying taxes, that's, that's a good thing, and the jobs. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. We appreciate it. I'm going to grant you on Monday. Thank you so much, Lori. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, you should see the other guys.
Thank you for taking the time out to come today.
Thanks, Scott.